Okay, six on one, all those records scheduled to be put in the Hillsborough City Council order. Uh, first item on the agenda will be the pledge allegiance, please stand. Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda will be your statements and persons wishing to address the council. We got two. Uh, first one, Mr. Orr, if you please step up to the side of the call. Please state your name and address. I'm sure you have forty minutes.
Uh, W G Orr, to the registered, goes right. Speaking as a citizen, and as a candidate of our government, I can probably talk to them. Now, maybe a little more much here, because I might access information that you guys have. This is in regards to potential location here of municipal rights processes, which would cause other issues in the city, convincing this school based student, number of products, number of, uh, now, generally, this process, kind of, you know, say, the reasons I've had is, is, is Scott, they, they still have to work with some of the development work. I don't know, um, who's just reporting now, they do so with, uh, H U C's, uh, concerns that do potential owners that may prepare, or, say, that is in their, very, very logic, uh, sort of distances required to add on the shield against shootings against these crimes. So, if, since I don't have the information, if you want to run a project, apologize for your time, if you want to run a project, which, um, I mean, I know you have a lot, or, can there, some of the information you should want, maybe, by just saying.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. Uh, you have a second, individual, Basil G., AKA B Z Watchdog. Uh, the answer is state your name, uh, your address, again, please keep your comments for three minutes.
Sir, I'll go ahead and identify my name and face, easy, easy Watchdog. Go ahead and just step up, hold a minute, right, not, uh, yourself, definitely, and not talk to myself and the very people out here that have been showing hatred to me, uh, today, especially two of them that are in here in the comments section here. Um, but I'll go ahead and get started, and go ahead and give my final, thank you. Uh, so I want to say good evening, Mayor, city council members, and citizens of Hillsborough. Uh, I haven't known or noticed this treatment yet. Uh, my name is Basil Zangary, I'm a civil rights activist, and I go by the name of B Z Watchdog on social media. Right documented exposed government misconduct. I'm here tonight to shine a new eye on a serious breach of public trust within your police department and to demand immediate action. On May sixth of twenty twenty-four, Officer Roseanne Liberman was disciplined for conduct so seriously resulted in a demotion, ten percent pay cut, forty hours of unpaid suspension, and eighty hours of counseling. The internal memo prescribing her actions of unbecoming of an officer's contempt commitment, uh, to the department, and a full internal affairs investigation right here, by the way. Uh, but the memo does spell out, well, what the community deserves to know is that this officer, Liberman, was drunk while off duty, found in a running vehicle while intoxicated, creating a danger to the public in this race through the badge. Any ordinary citizen who would have been arrested for DUI and lost their driver's license. But because she wears a badge, and because Chief Tony Kane wrote it's covered for misconduct, there were no criminal charges, no arrests, and no transparency. Hell, most of you guys probably don't even know that they're after. This just isn't misconduct, it's a coordinated cover-up. Tony Kane, currently serves as both the Director of Public Safety and the Assistant City Manager. That's too much unchecked power in one man's hands. He used that power not to protect the public, but to bury his conduct and protect his officers from accountability. He concealed what should have been a criminal offense, and in doing so, he has lied to the council and betrayed the public's trust. Meanwhile, the safety department is bringing in new recruits like Officer Erica Lopez. Professional respect for the young man and women who still believe in what policing is supposed to be, but they're being trained in a department where cover-ups are normal and bad behavior is protected from the top down. Meanwhile, let me be clear, this is not about one officer, this is about a department affected by bad leadership, and that starts with Tony Kane. So tonight, a mandate is canceled, terminate Tony Kane immediately from both of his wars. Keeping him in power sends one message to the public. If you're powerful enough, you're untouchable. To the people of Hillsborough, if you have video, records, or personal experiences involving misconduct with corruption, contact me directly. I go by B Z Watchdog online, I will help you bring the truth to light, even when others try to bury it. Thank you, I'll go ahead and endorse my final, thank you.
Moving on to the consent, consent agenda, deliberate act on the approval of the minutes in special and regular meeting on April twenty-fourth and May sixth, twenty twenty-five, act on the approval of bills, deliberate act on a resolution authorizing designated signatories for resilient communities program grant, and, and appointing the city secretary, the civil rights officer for the city of Hillsborough. Deliberate act on a resolution approving amendment to the development agreement between the city of Hillsborough and GRP Hillsborough Land Partners. Counselors, anyone have any questions, uh, anyone who goes into the line of the consent agenda? Here, uh, to the senator.
Councilmember Fleming, Councilmember Lloyd, Councilmember Robinson, Councilmember Richmond, Councilmember Jolly.
Moving on to the regular agenda, hold up public hearing, the second reading, and deliberate act on ordinance accepting the recognition of the plan in terms of commission to amend the terms of the two thousand seven zoning ordinance known as ordinance number O two thousand seven dash zero one dash zero one, whereby its purpose is to limit the permitted use limit entailing at a recreational vehicle resort and to define recreational resort. Mr. Orr.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, this being the second read, I won't go into too much detail. Uh, this proposed amendment would add recreational vehicle resorts to the zoning ordinance, um, defining as follows, uh, as you see on the screen, the emphasis would be on this being more of a tourist destination. Uh, this would be allowed a specific use permit in agricultural residential, bi- residential, heavy industrial, and commercial, and then supplemental conditions requiring a site plan, and engineering, so, and also here, applied condition use. The plans that you mentioned did review this, um, and therefore their recommendation for approval.
Counselor, question. This is the second reading, so we'll open up the public hearing, be aware of the audience that would like to address this particular agenda item.
Where is this, where are you planning to put this?
So, this right now is just a text amendment that would allow the process in the zoning ordinance for someone to request the use of a recreational vehicle resort. This isn't necessarily for a specific location, uh, but a person could apply for this use to be located in light industrial, heavy industrial, agricultural, uh, residential, or commercial, that doesn't guarantee that that would be approved. So if, if an application is made for a specific location, then this would allow the process where it would go through the planning, so, permission, city council, notification would be sent proper numbers within two hundred feet, and, and then each individual request would go through this process also, so if someone was within that distance, they would be invited to come and provide their comments, concerns, and, uh, for those requests when they're made.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else in the audience? Here and now, we close the public hearing and end that motion.
Councilmember Fleming, Councilmember Lloyd, Councilmember Robinson, Councilmember Richmond, Councilmember Jolly.
Next item on the agenda, deliberate act to clarify the policy regarding cleanup of wastewater backflow incidents on private property.
May I, Council, and, and, we have a little error in the power draft, so forgive us. Um, I'll just read what's in the, the document. Um, so, unfortunately, in adverse conditions, it is possible for wastewater from the sewage collection system to discharge into residential property. I'll give everybody a minute to think about what's at this. Under these circumstances, it is our policy to perform cleanup using our personnel. It is not our policy, however, to pay for damages. The reasoning for this is that, number one, we are not legally liable for these costs. Number two, there could be a wide range of costs, or billions of costs, for various issues. Number three, we don't currently have funding and a wastewater program to address this. So, that's the current policy, and those are the, the end opinions of the current policy. However, as you can imagine, people that are experiencing this, um, have asked that we reconsider this policy, or potentially put some changes to allow for, for response. Um, and we have here our reading, Ted Yarley, who have experienced a particularly unpleasant, um, I mean unpleasant as it could, I'll, I'll just let Mary, um, tell you how they experienced.
Mister Mayor, Council, thank you for an opportunity, and I'm sorry that I've not been able to get more information together on what's going on with that, but, if you'll remember the storm we had a couple of weeks ago on the hill, of, 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 of pounding rain that we had, our home was seriously affected. We had sewage churning up out of our showers and out of our toilets, yai-hai, going everywhere, affecting all but one room in our time of the house, and into our garage. Um, it was just, I can still hear me talking about it, it was very, very exciting that this is going on. We called the city, and as they came out, two young men appeared, and we told them what was going on, and kind of looked around a little bit, and they said, well, we need to go talk to our boss, so they have to go consult whoever was in charge. They came back, and a little while, and they said, sorry, our boss says we can't do anything. And I was a little bit devastated, but in talking with our insurance company, I was told to call, uh, a cleanup service, and I called Target Solutions out of there. Their big truck, along with giant vacuums and hoses and heaters and every other thing, showed up about two hours later and started the cleanup. The, the price of the cleanup is substantial. If we had had help from the city on the cleanup, we probably would have incurred all this cost, insurance, powder, barrier, no property, no damages, other than, I don't even know what they covered, but it was very small amount of money. I really feel that the city is responsible for this waste problem flooding into our home. It isn't the first time this has happened. We've lived there since nineteen ninety, I believe, it has probably occurred four or five times, but never, never to this extent, never. We were able to take care of it on our own, and we did. And having one other time, the last part of last year, where we called for help, only because we're not really able to lift buckets of silverware anymore to get out of the home, and needed help, the city came, and the city took care of it. We called them this time because it was twenty times worse than anything we had ever had in our home before, and destroyed a lot of things that we had, as you can imagine, and we had nice trucks, whatever we have on the floor, the pond, they're just, they're, they're trash. Targeted, they jumped, they knocked the home, but they had to do more damage to our home to make repairs, and because they had to spray micro code of, I don't know, components, so to keep us from getting sick, all over the house, and they had to cut back the sheet block, we're supposed to do two feet, they didn't do quite that much, which helped us with some of the cost of repairs. But if the city would consider doing anything to help cover the cost of this cleanup, we would greatly, greatly appreciate it. And that's all I have to say, there's your three questions, is all I have for you.
Do you mind if I add something? I, I, I don't want to take away anything from what Miss Mary, as you said, the only thing I'll add is that, um, we were mistaken in not helping with the cleanup, because, and I, uh, this is not the time for the technical explanation, what has happened before to allow us is not what happened this time. And when we went out, we were looking for what had happened before, and it didn't, and so the guy, you know, based on the evidence of what he saw, concluded that it wasn't the issue that we tend to have with our names in that area, and said, no, this wasn't us. It absolutely wasn't the city's system, it was due to the storm, it wasn't the backup brake clog that he was looking for, um, and so, but he went in to look for evidence of a clog that showed, shows are all, there was no evidence of a clog. So that's the basis of that, and so the cleanup portion, not the repair, the cleanup portion, and their target came and sprayed everything down and cleaned everything up, we are paying that, we are paying, because that is, that, that is the portion that we should have done in the first place, and the fact that you got somebody to do it, that part we will absolutely pay for. The only part that's not in our policy is to repair the damages or replace laws and stuff, so that's just the context of what I'm talking about. But, but, but at this point, now that I've been around to it, and I'm so sorry, but at this point, council may have questions, or if you have any questions for me.
Uh, Counselors, do I have any questions for Megan or Miss Howard regarding?
I have a question about some type of backflow, and they're not the, the kind of backflow prevention, we only just have our own, and that's, and the city is, are we, are we, is that?
We, we have ordered and will be installing a backflow preventer at this location, um, that they're not perfect, um, what they would have prevented in this case is, is the volume coming back up in, um, uh, under, under various conditions, so basically, for whatever reason, let's say the line can't take anymore. At that point, the backflow is not going to help stuff, you know, stuff's still not going to be able to leak your property, and they can leak, they're going to have to have attention, they're not a, you know, fix it and forget it kind of solution. But to prevent what happened from happening again, we have ordered, we will install a backflow prevention.
Uh, Megan, I've got one question, um, would, would it be in our best interest, maybe, if a employee goes out and inspects this, and, uh, a citizen maybe claiming it is or is a part of, would it, would it be in our best interest to maybe have a supervisor on call, that go out and actually make some eyes on it, and give it the yes or the no, that way, uh, inexperience doesn't come into this, or?
Yes, sir, and we can have those conversations, I, I anticipate that won't happen again.
Counselor, one more question.
Uh, this does act, I'm not quite sure, I guess act would be if we wanted to change anything in that policy.
So, you, you might say, um, you, you might act to direct staff to, to work on something, you might act to, yeah, there, this is just to give you the ability to, um, come up with reasonable next steps if there are some.
Would it be appropriate to, because maybe, uh, you and Miss Mary could together discuss after this, the solutions?
Yes, sir, um, the only caution that I would offer is that any, any action we take needs to be across the board to comply with the situation. So, so in this case, applying the current policy means that the, the cleanup or target restoration came in, sucked everything out, sprayed everything down, pulled basic wards and all that kind of stuff, they'll supply the city with that bill and will pay that back. Under current policy, that's all we would do. If you would like us to revisit that policy, that would allow us to, to look at the works and some of the other things, um, then, then some action or direction from you guys on that would, would probably clarify what you'd like us to do.
Sure, but you're not having any problem.
Right.
Ladies, another question, I mean, you said the features we covered much, but did you cover the things that, like, the cities and every, our laws, and, and things that had to be thrown away in place?
So, of what insurance, will insurance cover some of the proper ones?
Not always, I don't want to speak more, I'd have two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to cover tommy property, it would not cover a single cent of it because of the nature of this.
What, what?
And, and it, it essentially comes down to, is this wasn't a, a stoppage or a, a fault on the part of our line necessarily, this was a flash flood.
Counselor, does anybody have any opinions as far as amending the ordinance as we had to include property?
I feel that this was a very special circumstance, and while we do not necessarily have the means to do this often, that this is an unusual circumstance, and I think it should be considered to start again.
If you'd like, we could put something together to describe the conditions.
Maybe that might be better. Um, would it be best that we just take no action right now, maybe put it back on once we have some clearer language to follow?
I would, I would be glad to, if, 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 I, I think I understand where Councilmember Richmond is going, if there are any additional thoughts from council on stuff we can be putting into some drive for, I'd love to hear it now, or, you know, next couple of weeks, then I can start drawing something up for next.
I hesitate, one, I don't want to start to cover people's property, I think it becomes very, it's almost exactly like the ordinance is written, uh, however, uh, I kind of wonder if the city wouldn't have gotten involved sooner, if we could have mitigated at least a portion of those dangers before they had to be extended.
If, if, that water was coming so fast, and so furious, and so filthy, I would remember if we could have gone close enough to it to slow it, I had bath towels trying to stop the flow, they, I didn't mind if it paid my efforts.
Uh, so, we'll take no action on this, we'll let you just put your language on that, and in the meantime, you two can get together and discuss further.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for ten hour, sorry, for the inconvenience. Okay, next item on the agenda, do you have any word of suggestion, Mayor?
Anybody who hasn't heard this, you know, um, we have eight goals in our strategic planning, it's our, our practice to cover the first four goals in the first council meeting of every month, and the second four goals in the second council meeting of every month, so that every month you're hearing, uh, an update on the whole strategic planning. So, goal number five is build better infrastructure, um, and we are really getting close, not close enough for the folks directly affected, but we really are getting close to the end of our street infrastructure project, um, with particularly walnut and church streets. We are ninety-two percent complete as of the twelfth of May, um, they have forty-seven of their original contract days left as of that time, but that doesn't include all the bad weather days, and if you'll remember, it rained for like four, five months last year. Um, so they have several weather days that will be added back, but they, you know, they're going to be done, um, in, you know, hopefully a couple, three months, and then it'll all be over. Um, we're working on getting the final closeout from Texas Water Development Board on the industrial water tower project, um, and this is, this is to give us a sense of kind of where everything stands in relation to the different kinds of infrastructure that needs to be reworked. So, as you know, we're, we're about done with this project for streets, um, we need to think about our next phase of contracted work. We can't do that until we find out from Texas Water Development Board where we stand with the thirty million dollars we requested from them, because where we're going to do, um, line work in the streets, those are the streets that we then want to, um, fix over the top of those new completed water lines, so, everything's kind of awful for that. Um, I went last week to a Texas Water Development Board funding workshop, and got essentially zero new information about what we can expect to hear, um, it was, uh, you know, they, they, basically, it's a long time, so, it, it wasn't necessarily, um, it's not necessarily that they're behind in letting us know, based on their process, it could, it, they're still within the range of their process, but we've been sort of next for months now, so we're just waiting on that office to let us know when, when to submit them the next set of stuff. Maybe, I know that is, can you advance a point? It's not working over here either, it's not us. All right. Okay, there you go, thank you. So, um, I don't want to delve into this too much, you've seen it, um, the thing that I will add is that we do have our updated street condition study from Mexico, this is a contract that we entered into through the company that drives all of the streets, and they do an automated pavement index study. What's valuable about that is they can take the current pavement condition and predict the, the condition over the next, you know, three to five years. Spoiler alert, it's bad. So, this is what our system looks like on that, um, rating scale, um, it's sort of forcing, I mean, there are definitely streets that we thought were in good shape, um, than they are according to the pavement index, um, but when people say, why don't we fix the streets, this is why, like, that's not a map of the population, that's a map of miles that need to be completely replaced and rebuilt. So the goal is that every few years we would reassess, and that over time, that number would, would gradually start to get higher, and it is so bad, that if we, if we went from a fifty to a sixty, it would still be bad, and that would represent tens of millions of dollars of investment, I mean, I, I hesitate to guess, twenty, thirty million dollars, maybe we go from a fifty to a sixty, and it would still be bad. So, people need to understand this scale of what we're dealing with, and that's not to say we're not going to deal with it, it's, you've got to start putting numbers to it so that you can understand what it's going to take to get there, uh, on time, okay? And well, by the way, we'll bring that back to y'all, um, second meeting in June, in a little bit more detail, we just felt like we had to come along on right now. Um, next step is water, we talked about the thirty million dollars in Texas Water Development Board, um, we are going to be self-performing pieces, so the next We are getting the self-performing pieces, so the next thing that we're going to do is the line in Honeyberg. We've got the sewer line being replaced in Honeyberg right now, once that's done, we'll do the water line and then the street over the top of that. Talked about the sewer line in Honeyberg, you know, streets, water, sewer, drainage, the best we can do with drainage is just try to clean out what we have and keep it operational year to year, being able to do big drainage improvements. But, you know, I've got a citizen drainage concern today. It's not that we're not doing anything, it's that we, we don't have millions of dollars to put to it yet. Goal number six, deliver essential services, retract about streets, crews, our street crew also is the crew that does drainage and tree trimming and storm cleanup, so with the weather that we've had, they've not been doing a lot of street work in the last couple of weeks. Once they're done, working through all of that stuff, they'll get back and we'll be focusing on utility cut repairs again. We've had more issues with the industrial water tower. That SCADA system got knocked out again in the weather. Now we know we can operate it by hand, but that means having this whole person out there twenty-four seven, just face it and tell the, the computer to back up. So it's theoretically, it's supposed to be under warranty, but warranty isn't covering it because it's active god stuff. We are doing some minor repairs at Wallace Park. Want to mention a couple of complaints we received on our public safety department. We got a written complaint regarding an interaction between our officers and the subject. There was an internal investigation conducted. That internal investigation was done by the department. Management has reviewed it, and there was no serious misconduct found. That doesn't mean that there was not need for improvement and opportunities to get better. So there definitely are things that we'll be following up on, but in terms of misconduct, there was not any found. However, we have also forwarded some of this material to outside agencies, just because we don't want to verify that there's no internal bias. We want to take things very seriously, and that's our policy. We also got a telephone complaint alleging that we've miscanded a personnel matter, personnel matter that maybe I'll leave to earlier tonight. There is an investigation underway, again, just to verify what steps were taken, and we are consulting with outside parties again to verify no internal bias. And I think the, the point to make is that every opportunity to hold ourselves accountable is an opportunity to be the best that we can be for the citizens of Hillsborough. We don't need to defend ourselves for the sake of defending ourselves. We need to review and then be proud or take direction depending on what's warranted. So far, I think the things that we have done stand up to objective scrutiny, but we're making sure we're not just, you know, don't, don't take my word for it, we're, we're checking into it. Solid waste, new service continues, and tomorrow being the third Wednesday, residents who've called in to reserve it will have walk-in brush pick-up perp. We expect development and business attraction, we have a ripocating on Monday for a new business in our industrial park, night container crew. EDC also on Monday closed, they purchased thirty additional acres for industrial economic development. The team is working on Project Dispatch. That is the, the, the deal that has almost three hundred acres of EDC land under contract. Project, Project Priest Pop, we had a visit, we visited remotely this week and will be onsite next week, reviewing that purchase agreement, and then Project Treasure Hunt continues to move forward. Retail creatures continue to work with a couple of different prospects. In terms of the outlet law, we looked at that development agreement, that's going to allow for proceeding with demolition. Glazer Retail is working with six prospects right now. One has pulled back because of economy stuff. There is one that we were a little worried about, they had a site visit on Monday or yesterday, they were here in town, had one thing that they requested changing, that seems to be an easy fix, so we're cautiously optimistic moving forward. It does not look like there's going to be any big announcement anytime soon. That, at least, is pretty hush-hush, and doesn't want us to say anything until they start making their files, and that will be what someone, someone will see it somewhere in a first bid on the upcoming rate and rate program, but that seems to be the pattern. As of now, we're still on target for demolition early June, and staff and the developers team are having weekly conference calls to keep that on schedule. We've got that to do this week, we're going to work to the library of Hassan. We are preparing to put that out again to USDA for funding for the expansion, we can go over those forty-year low interest rate money. Programming, we've got the weekly library programming continuing, and we'll start our summer reading program next week. Park Semirac, baseball, softball, and already we have a tournament in town last weekend. You're really close to a lease on the Texas Theater. That's been surprisingly difficult, but you're, you're almost there. And we have Trilla Fest this weekend. Anybody who missed that, it was not anywhere near downtown because there were about six thousand people. It was, it was something to say. That concludes our report. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Counselor, any questions? Okay, no further business is being charged.